Hello.
Hello.
What's up? Anything good?
I let you know in about 15 minutes.
If you come to complain, your time is up.
Been a long time since I've been here, so I hope you take the word of white.
Don't let the horse.
Call a meeting order at 7 o'clock. Roll call.
George Knoll.
Erica Hartman.
Sean Arling.
Randy Snead.
Angela Ressindes.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Mulaney.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of 7/6/2022 regular session.
There is one change, Randy, at the top during roll call. Randy was here. So I need to change that in a minute, but if you could pass them. What's the change?
Motion to approve with changes stated by the court treasurer.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the minutes of 7/6/2022 with a change noting that member who then just was here. Any other further comments? It's not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm staying. I wasn't up here.
Citizens input. Looks like we have a lot of citizens. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I've got a check for a, I'm gonna mess this last name up, I'm sure, Shereen Tramer? Is that person here? From the DARE?
Do you want me to take your picture with the check or do you want to wait and get a hold of him and give it to him at the next meeting?
Yeah, let's try to do that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
And you are? My name is Roger Womackin, and I live on Walnut Street, just two houses. I live on the east side of Walnut Street, two houses from Clinton. And my concern, I talked to Todd, and my concern is the sidewalk they're gonna put in. I just have a few questions. Can I ask those questions?
Mark, do you want to address that?
Sure, you can ask.
Okay, I wrote them down, so I, you know. First of all, how and why is the state doing this? The county or is Argus doing it?
It's a joint effort with the state through a grant program.
Okay. My next question is, with the US Postal, the west side of Clinton is mailboxes, and all over mailboxes are on the north side of Highway 10, Walnut Street. Has that side of town ever been annexed?
Yes, all of that side of town is annexed, yes.
Annexed.
So the postal service had you put a box in for the safety of their carriers because there wasn't sidewalks.
Okay.
So that's why they had you put a box in.
Do they plan to put, and I'm speaking for, I was actually out working.
I assume you're gonna ask if they plan to do, have you do away with that and put them on the house? I have no idea. That would be a postal issue.
Yeah, I did have that question.
Yeah, that would be a postal issue. You'd have to ask them or once it's done. I assume they would notify you if they wanted you to remove your postal box from the street, put it on the house.
Right. Some, I was outside working and three of my neighbors, people were talking to me about it. Some of these questions are theirs. They couldn't make it. But you don't know if it's gonna be postal boxes or not.
Yeah, I can't answer that. That would be a post office issue.
Okay. And so I know in some cities, they bill people when they put in a sidewalk. Are we being billed?
No, this is done totally strictly with a grant.
And there's no removal ordinance on a sidewalk. Is there so many hours? One neighbor says, I think you have till noon.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours.
Okay, I'll tell him. And as you all know, Walnut Street, Highway 10, there is a sidewalk. It's not the best sidewalk. It's kind of overgrown, no edging, kind of, well, the, on the north side of the street. What is the purpose? What is the justification for this sidewalk? Where, if it's on my side of the street, it leads to a curve.
Yes, which will cross and then go, because obviously we have a pond that's down, or a park that's off of Pond Street.
Right.
So in order to get from this side of town there without crossing, so when Indot, when the town, when we look at those, we try to pick less points of contact traffic-wise.
Okay.
So our problem with the state road, we weren't able to put a crossing there at 10 to go across on the other side. So they'll also add a sidewalk from Clinton Street down around to Indiana Avenue on the north side.
Okay, to get to that part.
Yeah, both sides of Walnut Street will end up having sidewalks, just like both sides of Michigan streets have sidewalks.
Even, oh gosh, I don't know his name, Joe. Okay, just to the west of Clinton Street on the north side, there will be a sidewalk or there will not.
Yes, so from Clinton Street down around to Indiana Avenue on the north side.
And it will go down to the curve and then?
It will go down around, yep.
Over to, and they'll have a crossway at that last.
Yes, at Indiana Avenue. And we can do it there because it's actually, it will be on Indiana Avenue and not on State Road 10.
Okay, yeah, the neighbor on that side of the street asked me to ask, he wasn't sure if he was going to put one in. And the last question everybody asked, one neighbor was concerned because he had a crimson maple, and he noticed that the sidewalk over here, there's grass for about 14 feet and then the sidewalk. There's the curb, a grass, and then the sidewalk. He wanted, he said?
You're talking about where the park starts up here? You're talking about the sidewalk on?
The north side of Walnut.
Yes, so from the curb to the end of the sidewalk with 14 feet?
Ah, yes, not from the outside, inside curb, yeah. We just walked it off 14 feet, so it's not an accurate measurement. But my one neighbor said he had a crimson maple and another shrub. It is the sidewalk that's going to go in on the south side from Clinton on. He wanted to know how far that will go in and will it take his crimson maple?
Can't answer that today. We'll get all that information from Indot. So Indot from side of road has 15 feet, what they call a right-of-way.
Right, right.
So if you look on like GIS, your property line, I don't want to say it's your property line, Derek can answer this better than I can, but you'll see where it actually stops, 15 feet from the road.
Okay.
That line will show there. So Indot, I mean, they've got their right-of-way there, so it'll be somewhere in there. But what we'll try to do is obviously it'll line up and be straight. So there is some play in there. Normally, they do try to keep a section between the curb and the sidewalk and then put the sidewalk.
Mark, if his tree has to be taken, he's saying, he wanted me to ask, he says, he has no say-so within that, that.
Within that, that is correct.
Okay, okay. If you folks don't mind, I would like to just leave and go to the fair.
Thank you, help, Mary.
Yeah, and I'll leave it for you.
Enjoy it. Thank you.
And thank you for answering my questions, and y'all have a nice evening. Thank you.
Mr. Byers.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Bob Byers. I live on East South Street. I brought this up last year, and let me start off by saying I have no issues with the employees of the department. My concern is with the take-home vehicle that the chief of police has. He's got his take-home vehicle for emergency purposes to be called up here off-hours, whatever, fine. He's on vacation for 12 days straight. That's sitting in his driveway, serving the town of Argus to absolute zero capacity. I asked last year and the response I was given was, well, there is no policy for take-home vehicles, so we can't technically make him leave it here. And part of that concern is not just the fact it's doing absolutely zero benefit to the town sitting in his driveway while he's gone on vacation, but we've had a recent string of breakdowns within the fleet of the police department recently, and at one point, we were down to, I believe it was one or two vehicles. That was it. That's not true. There were two, Sean, there were two sitting at the mechanic shop. We only had four. That leaves two more vehicles. The one was there for a service job. We've been down one for a transmission. It was there for less than three hours. Okay. It's called spade to spade, Bob. Fair enough, but I mean, when you see two there, you presume they're both down for whatever reason. So you know, this is about assumptions. That's the transmission in the old thing. That's the same vehicle.
I'm not part of the police commission. I have nothing to do with it. Sean here is the president of the police commission.
The town council owns the police vehicles. The police commission does not own them. That would be true.
That's a true fact.
Same with the town owning the fire engines and ambulance. It's not the territory. That's technically not true. Oh, I apologize. I thought it was the same. My apologies.
So far as the police car, that's something that we've been, was there an order?
The police commission, the police commission, many years ago, we were going through all this and we didn't have a way to do what we wanted to do at that time with employees and everything else, and that time, we were down employees and we were looking for ways to enhance, the chief to be able to make, so he could get back and forth and do things in an emergency timeframe. We had plenty of cars, and we actually have one more now than we had then. And the town police commission made a, voted and made a recommendation to the town council to allow the chief of police to have a take-home vehicle under those parameters. At that time, when that was presented to the town council, that was, I don't know who's, George, I think you're probably the only one up here, it was on that council. The town council unanimously voted in favor of that recommendation, and that's the way it has been since. And that's about all I can tell you about it, great.
So him being on vacation.
Yep.
It's upsetting.
Is in an emergency, and we really needed him, he would come back.
This is a staycation, so to speak. He's not actually like gone somewhere.
Well, then he's.
I don't know. I was asking.
I don't. Because if he's. Again, he's been allowed by the town council to keep his car at home. Now, we have three other vehicles, so we have plenty of vehicles. I don't think anybody, nobody has to walk patrol, do they? Okay.
And if we have to go get it, we can go get it.
Yes, if something, if something would break down, let's just say one or two of them would just break down, things happen. We can send someone down and pick up the car because it does belong to the town. That's true. But you know, again, it's something we've allowed and it's gonna stay that way.
Okay. May I make a recommendation to the town council? Review the county's take-home policy. The sheriff's office says if you're, I believe, unless it's been changed, if you're gone more than five days, your car's sitting at the sheriff's office in the event it is needed. I also have an issue with the take-home car policy at the time, at this very time. Unless it's been changed, I've heard rumor through town, the police officers are not allowed to patrol 31, correct? That is correct, temporarily. Due to? Due to high gas prices. So we're still allowing the chief to drive his car down to Rochester? That's totally separate, totally separate instance. It still takes gas, Sean. You're trying to make mountain out of oil, Bob. It still takes gas, Sean. I'm not disputing that, but that car is given to him for a specific reason, by the town council. Which leads back to the others' situation. A year and a half-ish, maybe, maybe a year, two years, there was a missing child around the corner from both Erica and myself. Now, I'm not calling her out. I'm just letting you know the area the child was missing from. Nobody called the chief. He's got a car for emergency purposes. My, the answer I was given was, well, that, we didn't feel it was necessary to call him, but in the meantime, we dispatched the fire department out to help look for the kid. Bob, you.
Ten deep for us, Sean.
You have to understand there are internal department policies that are administered by the chief of police in, with those cases. Aaron's sitting right there. I bet you he can tell you if he needed to get on Cory, if he needed Cory up here, he could count on Cory to be here as fast as he could get here. And I'm not disputing that. Okay, so you're trying to twist something into something that it's not. If they needed Cory in that instance, they'd have called Cory. I was notified that day as well as being on the police commission. So I knew everything was going on that day. And you felt it wasn't necessary to call the chief up, but the whole fire department got dispatched? How do you know the police chief wasn't called? How do you know he wasn't notified? I was told so by the clerk's office. How'd they know?
Who told you that?
I'm not saying it was you. I don't recall who it was. This was almost two years ago, but when I called him to ask for it, it was ridiculous. I'm ridiculous, Mr. Harrow. I'm sorry, Bob. This is ridiculous. I. I'm just asking questions because none of it makes sense.
The thing, the only thing that makes sense is this. The town council allows the chief of police, whether it be Cory Bowman, whether it be Eric, whether it be any officer, Rodney Rudd, doesn't matter, but they are allowed to take the car home because they are on, they're almost, and I don't know if I'm saying this correctly, Sean, but they're almost on a 24-hour call.
Yep.
And anytime we need them, they need to get here. There's nothing gonna get them here faster than that car with those lights on.
Correct, you're absolutely right.
So allow them to do that. Yeah, they're burning gas. He does live in Rochester, you know, but still, it's protection for this community, and that's why it's being done. It's protection for this community. Now, far as we took them off the highway, yes, the police commission did take them off the highway because there was a lot of, the price of gas and the budget for the fuel.
Absolutely.
And to keep the budget, even the city, the employees here, they don't run the trucks, let them idle and everything like they used to. We've cut back on everything to this gas price stabilize at some point.
Correct.
So that's the answer on that. So this is gonna, it's brought before the town council by the police commission again to make a vote on what to do with the police chief car. It's gonna still be taken home by him and whether he's on vacation or whether he's not. And again, we was brought up, councilman George brought it up, that if we need that car, we can get it. We can get it in a heartbeat. It doesn't take anything. So it's nothing for, I don't think the community has to worry at all. It's still well-protected. You know, we have six full-time police officers. These guys are doing their job. They're doing a great job.
Yes, they are. I'm not arguing that at all.
And you know, I even heard a complaint, I believe it was from you, about not having an officer walk through the fairground.
Aaron has been, Aaron and Brad both on that topic have been walking through.
So the officer that you mentioned though was a busy man. He wasn't like he was sitting over here in the corner waiting for somebody to come speeding by. He had, he had a couple of jobs to do, to take care of, and you know, there's only so many hours in his shift.
Absolutely.
So walking through the fair is not, it is a necessity maybe, but when you can't do it, you can't do it. If Aaron gets called out right now and he has to take off in emergency and he's decided he's going, he can't do it.
Oh, I understand that, yeah.
So you know, nothing's gonna change, so you just, we're gonna let this go and this, we're gonna stay the way it is. Now, that's the answer for your questions.
Good deal. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My name is Lou Boroff. I live on Logan Street. We got the same problem we had two years ago. Barney Beard. He still ain't fixed the house. They had several people do the roofing. They never come back. I got cats on there now. And also, we got bees going in their house.
Can I interrupt you for just one second?
Yeah.
Are you gonna take care of that?
Hang tight. About 10, 15 minutes, you'll hear an update on the beard's property.
We have a solution.
Good.
Mr. Jones will take care of it and he'll tell you what's.
It's something we've been dealing with about 45 days now. You haven't ever been to a council meeting, probably know one way or the other, but we've got a stack here of properties that are being addressed, and that's one of them that we're gonna update tonight, okay?
Well, I ain't seen no improvement for two years.
And I would agree with that.
That's why the town's moving forward with it. So again, just soon as I can go through these properties, we'll give you an update on that, okay?
I get very impatient. With my house is clean, fixed up, got that house actually needs to be tore down. Because you got holes in the floor, got tarps on the roof, still been there for two years. Still ain't never been taken care of.
Luke.
Give him 10, give him 15 minutes.
Give, give, please, just because it's being addressed.
Yeah, okay. All right, buddy. I'll wait.
It's unfortunate the timeframe that it takes to get anything done and the cost that it takes to get anything done.
I don't like that.
But it's just, believe me, it's a lengthy, expensive process, so just wait for Derek.
See what it is, when we fixed our house, we got an FDA loan with no problem. And Barney Beard had a chance with all that money the government gave him. I don't know what the hell they done with it, probably nothing.
Okay. All right.
So just give it a few minutes of this.
I'm just saving my van.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I was just asking about the, if you guys may, Robert, about the chickens.
Your name, sir?
Robert McMillan. Live at 304 East Walnut Street. I come in last week and did a speech about, oh, no, I'm sorry, last meeting, and about the chickens. I have total of six chickens. And I was seeing if the town could change the ordinance because I could see the fine for it. I didn't know if you guys had had any, had any time to go over that or think about it or anything.
We have. I did a little looking into this and we have actually had a workshop this evening before the meeting. I'll just tell you basically where things stand now as it relates to a thing called the zoning or the land use development code, and then also the town code is okay, just so that everybody understands where things are at right now, okay? But concerning the zoning ordinance, Animal Production Limited, which is basically a small-scale operation seemingly to fit what you were doing, is what's called a special use in your R1 zoning district, okay? Your residential one, which means basically community housing, city streets, things like that. A special use means that you've gotta go in front of a planning commission to get approval to do something like that, okay? So that's what, that's what the zoning book says. On the other hand, you also have the town code of ordinances, okay? And that's a, that's a separate, different book. And it pertains to more than just the use of property, but just general regulations throughout the town. And that also does address chickens, okay? And there is a section in there that discusses noisy animals, and we'll just put that to the side, not even go down that road, and just assume that they're quite as chickens there at work. But there's also a provision. There's also a provision that says that you also have to have a minimum of five acres to have chickens on your property within the town limits, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry. Can I interrupt you for a second?
Well, before you do, I'm just gonna say, so we've got those two different, and I'll say they don't mesh very well, and that's also the subject of our workshop, but either way, it's not a permitted use as you sit here today because you've not gotten the special use, and even if you went through that process and did get a special use, you've still got the roadblocks there of it being that you do not have five acres there within the town.
Is there any town property that has five acres?
We actually looked at that. There is one parcel of real estate within the corporate limits of the town that is greater than five acres that having chickens would be a permissible use.
Can I ask, is it okay to still have pigs?
I'm sorry?
To still have pigs? Because remember I brought that up the last meeting that.
I didn't get into that because you don't have pigs.
No, no, what I was just saying, you know, the land use.
There were provisions for, I think, the pot-bellied pigs or something like that, and again, I can't quote that to your side or to you.
No, that is fine.
Both the town code and the land use development or the zoning, they're all available online.
Yeah, I read the town ordinance about it and everything. I didn't read the zoning ordinance. But yeah, I just, I find it kind of hypocritical that we can have a hog or a pig, pot-bellied pig, whatever you wanna call it, outside, you know, stinking up the neighborhood and stuff like that, but our clean chickens that are in their pen all day, in their coop at night, that seems, you know, just seems kind of regrettable, that's all. Have we, I understand the different land use. Is there anything we can do about changing some of those laws? I mean, because that's what, really, I understood that, you know, when I got the ticket, there was the land use clause, and I'm understanding about the chickens and the town limits, but that's why I came here was to try to get us to maybe see if we allow a certain amount of chickens or within city limits, plus you think about it, you know, like I said in the last meeting, other people are gonna do it eventually. Other people are gonna get chickens. Other people are gonna do that. It would be better to step out in front of it beforehand, set some parameters for everybody to abide by, and then allow the police to enforce it rather than just having people get a few chickens and let them run around the town all day, or stop at TSE and pick up, you know, two chicks and then let them, you know, stay in their house all day long, or whatever it is, you know. It just, that's why I was going there, could we get that changed?
And that was the reason, I think, that the council had this workshop at 6:00 PM this evening, and they discussed that, and again, that's something that the council did discuss, and I'll let whoever wants to address that, address that.
Okay.
But I just wanted to let you know currently where things stand. That's where that's at.
Okay, thank you.
The deal, at what point in time, and obviously there's laws and everything, it's like you were saying, the pot-bellied pigs and whatever. When do we stop? Okay, you come in this week and want chickens, and Luke comes in next week and once again, he's in, he comes in next week and wants turkey, so every month we're changing, 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 which adds to the police enforcing ordinances that don't need to be. Those are stipulations people want, I'm not being smart about this. That's what you live in the country for. I lived in a country. I live in town. I understand that. To you, they're not hurting a thing. They're yours. They're not your neighbors. But it is against town code right now.
It is.
While I get this, don't mess up.
It's both.
Can it be changed? It can. Not by the council this time. I go through the planning commission and BZA, correct, Chuck?
Planning commission.
Planning commission. So with that, like I said, you just keep adding, adding, adding. Where do we stop?
I agree with you, but there is a limit. We allow dogs and cats, but we don't allow exotic animals. But yet, I know of probably half a dozen people in town that have pythons in their house. One of them got out the other day and got loose, so I'm just saying, we allow dogs and cats, but then we don't enforce any of the other exotic animals. You know, we allow all these things, or like that, there's an exception for a python.
We don't know that there, we can't enforce it.
Yeah, but I wanna know. I agree. I agree about that. But still, I'm saying, you know, it actually says in the town ordinance.
You want to tell us where those pythons are?
I, I.
Seriously?
Yeah, I could, yeah, I could give you some, but I'm, I'm not snitch. But anyway.
I'm ready to take notes.
No, I agree, but that's the thing, you know, like that, there is a limit. I know you can say like, oh, how, where do we stop? Well, we stop where it stops. I mean, we make it a judgment call on each case. I mean, that's simple as that. I mean, you know, we can say like, oh, he wants turkeys. Well, turkeys are. I mean, you know, we can say like, oh, he wants turkeys, well, turkeys are a lot more dangerous. Where are they living, you know, are they have neighbors right on top of them? You know, how big is the area they're gonna do, like we said, we can set parameters that they have to be in a pen, it has to be this, it has to be that. If the neighbors complain, the police will take care of it. You know, there are limits, you know? We can, yeah, we can keep snowballing before, you know, somebody might wanna count, but obviously, that's not gonna work, you know? I mean, that's, that's all I'm saying, when it comes down to it, there are, there is a limit, you know? So, you know, saying, where do we stop?
Special use? Permit? Okay, then that goes in front of the planning commission.
Correct.
I was just gonna say, maybe to kinda quicken this up a little bit, the next planning commission meeting is August the second. That will be right here at seven P M. If you want on the agenda, let me know or let Lisa know, we'll have you on the agenda.
Great. Okay, that sounds good.
I don't I don't intend to make you run through a bunch of hoops, but there's still the guys, there's still the ordinance, there's still the town ordinance, says you gotta have five acres, okay? And that's this council, okay? So you can go appear in front of the planning commission and even if they said, we'll give you a special use, you're still kinda butting your head against the wall, okay? So, and again, you're welcome to go there and that's fine and discuss it with them. Nothing wrong with that, but it, it does also come back to the council, just so, again, you're clear about this.
No, I agree, I, I understand, yeah, I would go to the planning commission, talk to them, they give me a special permit, but I still accept for that, so that's what I mean, you know, so we've got like three different layers here.
Two.
Two, well, two there and then we have the planning commission, I guess, but I didn't even, so at least two layers that we would have to get changed. I mean, I understand, it's not that, you know, I know they're just chicks or whatever, but, you know, we, we make limits on, you know, the dogs as far as their, you know, how much they bark, you know, how much they're, if they're off a leash. You know, there are limits to these things and I just would think that something small and well taken care of and things like that are, should be something that, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying I'm, you know, poor or anything, but I have enough money to go out and buy a five acre piece of land. You know, but my children and my neighbors and everybody else love having chickens around. So it, it's just something nice and, you know, that, heck, I had three, three kids over today playing with the chickens. You know, it just, you know, it just seems, being Argus, a small town, we should embrace that a little bit more. You know, that would be something that, and like I said, not everybody's gonna get them. And not everybody's gonna, and some people that get them aren't gonna take care of them. But that's what the regulations are for, that's what, you know, the police will enforce, you know? So, that's where I'm at. Is there, you said about the workshop, uh, are we gonna have another workshop or, I mean, like that? If I, if I wanna, if I'd like to get this changed?
The, it takes the council to change an ordinance. And, and I'll just tell you that based on the discussions at the workshop, I don't feel that there was any, any consensus that, yes, we wanna change the ordinance to allow that or to change it to allow chickens to be permissible in an R1 district. We did talk about changing the ordinance so that it is consistent with the zoning ordinance. Okay, so that those two are compatible and they don't kinda fight each other, they're not different. So it, it's been directed to me to work on that. But there was no direction that basically said, yes, let's allow chickens with some kind of limits, parameters or what have you within that R1 district.
So you guys pretty much made this.
No, I don't know if that's, that's true, our biggest concern right now is to get our competing two things. I don't feel as prudent as a council to put something in place when we have contradictory policies already in place. And until we correct what is contradictory, I am not, I personally am not comfortable moving forward with anything else at this time. Until we get our ducks in a row.
I agree, I agree.
And.
It's gonna take a while.
Till we get our chickens in a row.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, I figured it would take a while. So everything's, you know, you guys are just trying to, trying to get everything together, then we'll move on. Okay?
And for the, for the record, I have been to your rez, I went through the alley, I looked at, I mean, I understand exactly what you're talking about and, but unfortunately, things at this level, dealing with these two things in particular, move at a snail's pace, I'm sorry. I have a better answer than that for you.
No, that's fine, I, I, I understand now, things take forever, so I mean.
Kinda like Lou and the house.
Yeah, oh no, you know, it takes a while, I understand.
Yeah.
So, okay. All right.
They did, we didn't forget you and we didn't throw you off.
Okay.
We were just.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
We're gonna get a milkshake now too.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else, any other citizen input? Do you have anything for you, sir?
Do you want cool air?
All right, no problem. Okay, we'll move on, old business attorney report.
All right, we do have several of these, I'll call them unsafe buildings, nuisance actions, whatever you wanna call them. Start with easy ones first, the first one is the property at five twenty-one North Michigan Street, the Mulaney property. The last meeting, the last meeting said, go ahead with the process to get into the house, to take a look at things. And after researching Indiana code and the unsafe building order, it's called an inspection warrant. I got everything prepared, ready to go to file in court, you gotta get a judge to sign the warrant to allow us to get in the property. When I did that, there's a lot of time constraints and I said, Chuck, can you come in here and meet with me because when we do this, we have certain time constraints and I didn't wanna just file and say, Chuck, here you go, you got forty-eight hours to do this. But with, so when Chuck comes in, we, we talk about this and Chuck kinda says, let me have a chance to go and approach her and explain what's coming and see if she would not allow it. And I think the council then got an email after Chuck did that, where he was allowed access. He's been through that and as I read the email, everything is structurally sound. She has made obviously efforts to take care of the roof. The siding has been repaired, I think there is maybe a couple of issues still with some places in the foundation that need to be blocked up, what have.
There's, there's a couple holes in the foundation.
But at the end of the email, Chuck said, recommend that we close this and that it's satisfactory and he no longer has concerns about it being an unsafe building, so we would
I'll make a motion to close the Mulaney property from the unsafe building process we're going through.
We have a motion and a second to close the inspection and complaints on property on five twenty-one North Michigan, Mulaney property. Any further comments or anything on this?
Doesn't look better.
If not all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose? Maybe that one's done, Derek.
Next one is the McGowan property at one 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 South First Street, I'm sorry, actually that's his address, but the actual property that he owns is at seven eleven North Michigan. Chuck was in, we did go over that, it's basically a junk and trash situation there on that property. So a letter did go out in July the twelfth, we got thirty days to wait and see if there's any response asked to that. Nothing to really vote on, just kinda giving you the update. The next one I have is the Beers property at one ten Logan Street. I did get a response from Beer's attorney, Mr. Perkins, that was on Monday. I've kinda been hit and miss in at work this week, but I did forward that to you folks, I don't know if you've seen it. But even since then, Lisa informed me and I don't know if y'all have a copy or not, but there is an actual signed estimate basically to begin work on the, on the roof of that property. I don't know, it, it's tough to discern exactly when that work may start. But there certainly is a signed contract, looks like it was signed just today by the Beers.
He said, he said that the contractor is probably gonna start next Monday.
Okay.
That was the impression that he got, that it was gonna be Monday.
And that was basically the gist of the email as well, is that the Beers were just trying to find a contractor that could get on this and get working with it. So it looks like, again, they are responding and getting things taken care of.
Derek, if, if you don't mind, there's multiple issues at that property and everything that we've got, and I, I agree, they've been responsive on this as far as the structural integrity of it, but as long, go along with that, that property in itself is probably worse than the one that we cleaned up over here on Church Street as far as grown up vegetation and you know, just stuff that shouldn't be there, you know, I'm gonna call it rubbish, that kinda stuff and.
And I guess I'm gonna say this, but when we send a letter, it needs to be all inclusive and not, not piecemeal it and then keep adding things down the road. So if there's a problem when we send a letter, which was back in May, we need to address it then.
I thought that wasn't that letter.
No.
Cause Corey's been writing that up for two years for that.
That would've been more Corey's jurisdiction than the unsafe.
Well, but no, all the same, if there's an issue with a piece of property that we wanna see addressed and we're to the point where I'm sending letters, we need to tackle it all at the same point in time so that it, it gets taken care of.
Yeah, I was under the impression that that was a two-piece part there, the structures were already cleared up.
It was really only about the roof. And it started back on April the twentieth. Letter I sent out was May the tenth after the council meeting.
Chuck, did you see anything other than the roof?
What do you explain?
I mean, did you see any other structural damage?
And I also get it that maybe in April, there wasn't a lot of vegetation to be grown up at that point in time in the, in the year. But I know that our letter addressed only the conditions on the roof and I mean, we got, or I, I shouldn't say we, but I mean, I have all the pictures concerning that and that's what we see, our tarps on the roof. I mean.
Yeah, I agree, I, I agree with all that.
That looks like April, you got daffodil bloom.
Right now, it looks like a woods and a house in the middle of it.
Still is.
And I, I looked through the police records, for at least two years, Corey has wrote that up and sent in multiple letters about the vegetation and that's why I thought that was all part of this. And my best understanding what exactly was going out there on that, but.
May I speak? There's still a lot of trees to be cut down in our property. And they do have holes in the floor, if you don't know that. Cause a year ago, there was a guy come from Plymouth frayed for bugs. And he showed me the pictures inside and it wasn't pleasant. And this summer, I was sitting out on my deck and there's a big old rat coming to your yard. And I know where it come from. So you might fix the roof, but you ain't gonna fix the problem.
Well, we did, we did address the cat situation. We had.
Yeah, we got more cats coming.
I get it, but so does every neighborhood in Argus, just ask them all.
I got it too, Lou.
So, I, I'm just telling you, we addressed the ones that she said she was feeding, she knows she can only keep three cats. And she knows that she has to keep them up on shots and everything like that. I have, I understand, but she knows that and we did address it. And she did have some farmer come in and get a whole bunch of them, is what her husband told me. So, and then I even had a neighbor say that, yes, he can verify that they did take a lot of those cats away. Okay, so he did, well, but I can't stop the cats from coming back, you know what I mean? So, I mean, I can't stop the cats at my house, so.
I realize that, but I'm, I'm just saying, you can solve one problem and you're creating another one. If you go get in that house and look at the floor and stuff, they do have a handicapped adult in there.
So you called the adult services and they called me and they said that they would go down and check it out, I have not heard what they, you know, you know, what they did. They did call me and ask me if there was an adult handicapped person in there and I said, yes. And, you know, they said that they would look into it, but I have not heard from them, so.
Like I said, you can, you can fix the roof all you want, but you got the other problem in back and you got the house that's got holes in them, so you're gonna have to face that eventually. So, you know, my opinion, that house is a dump for the whole neighborhood. I don't care what you say, but what you do, it's still a dump. My house is clean. So if they can't fix it, the roof ain't gonna take care of it, no.
I'll tell you what, Mr. Boroff, there is a thing called a private nuisance action in the state of Indiana and you can pursue that if you wish to do it.
I'll do that.
Okay, there you go.
Give me the address and telephone number.
For what?
How to do that.
You have to file it in court.
Yeah, it's something you probably either need to get an attorney to help you out and do that or, or do it on your own, but that's up to you.
But it's gonna cost me money.
Right.
What am I gonna get out of it?
Well, your satisfaction of taking care of the property the way you want it taken care of. In the meantime, the town has an issue to address about the roof that we tackled. And so we need to basically decide what we're gonna do here with one ten Logan Street.
See, I offered to buy the house from Barney in the winter time. Well, he, his comment said, I have to ask my wife. And then they got another house across Mission Street. They put all the stuff inside the house in it. And when they had that bad weather, a big limb fell on the roof, so that's where that stands. So, you know, you can fix the roof all you want, but it ain't gonna help the house. So, you know.
So what are we gonna do with the roofing, you guys?
The what?
The roof.
You gonna wait till the work is done?
Cause they already had, they already had seven people at the roof. Give them a lesson.
I think they've got scheduled work, I think we just let them go ahead and bring do their work.
Right, right now, we're gonna, we're not gonna to stop this, drop it, we're gonna table it till the work is done. With what that they've got, this contractor lined up to do. And then we'll see, we'll go from there, see what else and we might need to look into.
I appreciate it.
Okay?
Randy, if it pleases the board, I could get with Corey again and do like we did with the Church Street property. And I could go with Corey, go take pictures of the outside. We could start that process of writing the letter down again. From Corey first, we gotta go through all that process from square one again, but we're gonna go down that road to that property. Yeah, I agree with Lou, it, it's terrible.
So Lou, here, here's, and I understand life of patience, I'm a very impatient person about things too, but anyhow, it's gonna take us a little while.
That's fine.
So.
I got patience, you're the stimp.
You do know that we're working on it. You know, we're trying and we're not, we've got one problem that we have to take care of, that was addressed. And so do we find out what that's doing, we can do anything but what Sean says, we can have, we can start a separate.
Basically start from square one.
Yeah, and, and get pictures taken and everything and give things prepared.
That'd be fine.
So, but it's, again, it's not gonna happen overnight.
I know that.
Okay.
But like I said, it just, this makes my house look terrible.
I know, I know, I drive down that road in the morning, every morning.
Cause I'm, I'm right next to it and I can see what, what's the sand peak going on, my wife, she wants to move away, I said, no, we ain't moving away.
Well, good for you, stay right where you're at, give us a, give us some time, sir.
Cause she had her way, we ain't moving.
The council, council wished for me to go into that process.
So you're hanging on just a second, go ahead.
I'm making a motion to table the roofing for the Beer's house. To get them, you know, since it's already, go.
We have a motion to table the, anything being done at the Beer's house till we hear back from the contractor about the roofing problem. And do you wanna add anything on to that motion or?
I don't know if it should be a separate motion or not, but I would be willing to get with Corey, start the process of the overgrown vegetation.
We'll do that as a separate motion.
Yes, or one again, so.
So we have a motion and a second to table it till the roof is done and we'll see what goes from there. Any further comment? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sean, you have another motion?
I'll make a motion to allow me to get with Chief Bowman and go take pictures of the overgrown vegetation on the property, Logan Street, owned by Mr. Beers. And start that process again of a letter from the code enforcement and just start now, we know where it's gonna head eventually, but we gotta start again with that, so. But all along that step, we'll forward it up to Derek so he can keep that.
Okay. Okay.
In sequence.
Uh, if you're gonna take pictures, take pictures of the front, the side, west side, east side.
I've been down this road before, Lou.
Yeah, we, we know, sir.
All right, I have one.
We have a motion, we have a second on this.
Second thought?
We have a motion and a second to start, uh, the process of taking pictures, having the chief of police go down there and look at it also. And we will take all the sides, every word that's on the property, okay?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
So with the motion and a second, is there any further comment on any of that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There you are, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Back to Attorney in the Court.
I got, we also got a property at 304 East Plum Street. This was Virgin of Vila. The last meeting we had, we were gonna table that. This was one, I think that Chuck had had some face-to-face contact with them. They may have been working on some things, but we did, Chuck wasn't here at the last meeting, so we weren't really sure where things stood at that property.
Oh. Yeah, she was cleaning it tonight, we discussed that. She was out there pulling weeds, but I'm the body. Tonight? No, no, no. The night we talked about, and Chuck texted her that day. They were out there cleaning stuff up.
And, yeah, it may have been text, maybe not face-to-face, I mean, it was supposed to.
I know, right, well, that's me, and we tabled that till we can get an update from Chuck.
Right.
So you ready for that? It's an old trailer. No matter how you look at it, it's an old trailer. She did go out and fix the skirting around the bottom of it, brought that back together, got that pretty well fixed. The porch, uh, where I was concerned with the, uh, bad spots, got that reinforced and that's solid now. I think she's brought it up as good as she's gonna be able to get it done. Now, if you wanna have an ordinance that says you can't have a mobile home that's X number of years old, then we could do something other than that. I don't know if we're gonna be able to get anything done with that. George, do you remember, listen, sort of ordinance passed a few years ago about if a trailer.
If they're remodeling, if they can't remodel.
Right, after a certain date, they couldn't, they couldn't send a new one in.
They can't, if they pull a trailer out, there cannot be another trailer for it.
Right.
Only if they're part.
It never.
The only way they can do that is if, if it's a hardship case and they're moving something in for a parent or, uh, you know, take care of somebody, and that's a yearly review.
But it was never discussed at the time, how old the trailer, like some of the, you know.
No, I'm almost positive we didn't put an age limit. If it's there, it's there till it stays.
It's there till it rots away, yeah.
I guess, folks, what, again, what, what was directed for her to take care of?
Is taken care of.
Was a fence, there was broken pieces laying around the yard that needed to be taken care of and repaired. There was skirting that needed to be replaced on the mobile home. There was a broken out and boarded up window. And the porch railing and decking was either rotting or falling down. That's what was requested to be taken care of in the letter?
And she's gotten all those taken care of.
Done, okay.
It's minimum, it's not what you would do at your house, not what I would do, but it meets what we asked her to do.
Motion to close the property on 304 East Plum Street for the. Oh, for the. Foundation and the porch railings and general disrepair that has been repaired at that address.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and close the property at 304 East Plum Street for the property violations that have been taken care of. Any further discussion on any of this? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two more, the next one, and I say the ones that I have conflicts on for last, so I'm kinda reporting this from what I'm informed. Last time on the Argus Enterprises LLC property at 413 Southwest Street, the order was signed, I sent that back to the attorney, Carmen Post, and so the order's been signed, go ahead, and I think it could serve to them, but they have 60 days from when that occurs, so we're, we're looking at probably early to mid-September before that deadline would come and go. So again, I'm just letting you know that, uh, we got that kicked out, and we just kinda, gotta wait and see what happens around about that timeframe, okay? The next one was property at 193 South Michigan Street, owned by Shelley Marselliano. This was one that, we gotta go back to the meeting we had on June 15th. We did not get service on the letter. Chuck talked about that he would be able to hand deliver the letter, I'm not gonna care about that. The next meeting, which was July the 6th, uh, Chuck wasn't at that meeting, so we just tabled it. And so here we are, and I don't, I don't know where that one's at either.
She's been doing some work on it. But that's about all I can tell you right now. I didn't go by there today to take pictures of anything.
Does she, was she notified though? Did she have a letter?
Yes.
She does?
Yeah, sent that regular mail.
Oh.
And then we posted one on the door.
Was there a timeline on it later, the other stuff then?
Thirty days, I'm pretty sure.
Thirty days?
Not anymore than that.
Oh, really?
So they were up there building, and there was no building permit pulled for that. And so, um, as far as I know, Steve Howard, the building commissioner, did shut that down. Until they get a building permit.
And registered contractors.
Yes.
I called him on that, had him come down, let him do what he's supposed to do.
Okay.
So he puts stock work order on that until they got a permit to do all the repairs in the roof. And register contractor.
Derek, does that letter add thirty days? I mean, what are our options, Derek?
Well, this is.
Obviously, we're getting up against that thirty days.
Well, it could be, but this is an informal letter, okay? We're not into the statutory timelines of the unsafe building ordinance or the Indiana statutes that deal with the unsafe buildings. So this is kinda the warning shot across the bow, if you will, that, hey, get something taken care of here, um, or we're going to have to go through the process, just like Argus Enterprises. Okay, in that, in that case, an order was prepared, it was signed by the council, and that's being served, and then that is a firm timeline. If, and that can be even extended or amended as well. But you're, you're starting into that process. If, if that doesn't correct the problem, then the next step is take the matter to the courts. We're, we're earlier in the game here with this property at 193 South Michigan Street. We have a letter, and if there's some response, um, and it looks positive, I think, you know, obviously communication would be good to say, council meeting, we discuss things, but if there's progress, keep it moving.
I'll make a motion to table this one at this time for thirty days. At that time, I'd like to have an update from Chuck on progress and what's going on down there before we proceed any further.
Second thought?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table the, uh, property at 193 South Michigan Street for thirty days. And then at the end of that, we would like to see what Chuck DeWitt has found out on all this property. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
That was it, that's all the properties, and it's all that I had to root for.
Yep.
Can I make a motion to approve the attorney report?
Aye.
Motion and a second to accept attorney report. Any further comment on that? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Other whole business, anybody else got anything that we need to go back and hash around?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Um, in our, in the summer of every year, we have an employee appreciation dinner. It's been tossed around a few times about having it different places. We've always liked it at Cristos, only because it's big enough, they had, we can hire a bartender. For the, you know, um, we did not reserve a space because people were like, oh, we should have it here, we should have it there, so I would like you guys to make a decision on the employee appreciation dinner for this year, because we normally have it the first Friday in December. Just so that, you know, things start getting hectic towards the holidays and stuff like that, so.
So is there a decision on the date or the location?
Um, both.
Is, is there a place? Obviously, I'd like to keep it in town if we could, but my question is, is there a place in town that can accommodate the type of dinner that we have there equally or better than what we already have? I mean, I, I question whether in town, if there's a place that can accommodate that many people.
Yeah, for her, yeah. A venue building could accommodate it.
If they're not busy, if they're not booked, we can check at the Gallery on West. But they do not have a bar or a bartender. I'm not saying that if.
BYOB.
Yeah, right, no. But you can handle all that?
I know a bartender that would do it.
Well, so you would have to check their restrictions at the fairgrounds. I don't know what they are. And, you know, um, if, if that's something you wanna look into and table this till next meeting, that's fine. But we do need to make a decision because things do hook up, and then we will have no place to go. So. In the basement? Oh, you know?
I have a patio there.
There you go, it's December. So I, it's just something that we normally do, so we really need to know what we wanna do this year. Everybody says they wanna keep it in town, but nobody can come up with a good enough venue. We've tried it, um, when it was Jay's, it's just very tight, cramped. You can't move around, um, you can't talk amongst each other, and you definitely, you know, feel very cramped. Log House sometimes runs theirs out. I don't know if that's an option. And for a private party, I don't know how much that would be, so. Oh, yeah, and then they are open on Friday night, so that's during regular business hours, so. They would, you know, either one of them have volun, would like to cater it if we had it somewhere else, but, um, I don't know if the Legion would, you know, if that's something that you wanna try. They do have a bar, but I, I don't know what their rules are for serving, you know, outside yet people that are not members, so.
Gallery of the West would probably be our best. This is just my follow-up now. And like George says, we can get a bartender. There are two or three people in town that we can get to cater the meal.
Okay, but who's gonna buy the roof?
I would, I got a question, Randy, before we go to, you know, I got a question. I think, I agree with you in one instance, but I think we need to see what the total cost of doing that there versus where we've been going, or is it all one place inclusive?
If we decide to do it in town, that's.
Yeah, I agree with.
We're limited on the choices. We, we know what, um, Cristos is gonna be because you can make a phone call and he pretty much tells you.
Talking about hiring a separate bartender or anything else, you're gonna, I don't think this is gonna be higher cost.
You're gonna have to buy, uh, whatever it is, the alcohol you want, you're gonna have to buy it. Someone's gonna have to pay for that.
I mean, you can have a dry one.
We could, we, we could have whatever people want. I think we do need to look into prices, so. Like Sean, I think I'd like to, to see if the council comes to an agreement to table this to, uh, next meeting, but we're gonna be, uh, August, September.
We usually have it booked by now, but everybody wanted to.
Well, if, if we don't get it done first of August, we're gonna, might run against a lot of problems. Things fill up fast. So I think we need to table this maybe to next meeting and come back with some prices on the rental of the gallery, the rental of Cristos, the process. George needs to let us know about a bartender and maybe a rough, uh, like a ballpark figure of alcohol and stuff, you know, I don't know, two or three thousand dollars. You know, I don't know what it would take.
Could take care of me and Dave.
I don't think I, I don't think that even, that was two or three thousand just on alcohol. That wasn't the whole dinner last year.
Well, see, I don't know, because I didn't.
We could find a bartender, but, yeah, you could buy every alcoholic drink something it wants.
Well, you know, again, food security. I know, I know, I know, anything larger than gallons, so.
Okay.
So anyhow, let's, go ahead, somebody, uh, let's, let's get a motion on this and get this rolling.
Oh, I don't, I think if you just table it, you can table it.
Okay, so let's just table that to next month, and then we need to have some deference on times and dates and find out.
I mean, I can find out if the Gallery on West is available, but she's not gonna hold it if we're not gonna do it.
Right, well, yeah.
You know? I mean, Jamie can call because they love him, so.
He can turn off the light.
He'll just ask, and then they'll ask.
Jamie's only been here five minutes, you already picked on him.
Let's try to get through this.
That's what happens when you show up late.
Resolution 2022-10, the power tracker.
I'd like to watch when we pass resolution 2022-10, the power tracker.
We have a motion and a second to pass resolution 2022-10, the power tracker. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Power tracker passed. Ordinance, we have an ordinance. This is 2022-09, this is utility connections. Explain, please. Explain, please.
Somebody, Derek, you wanna do this, or Lisa, who knows most of them? I'm gonna take this to Lisa.
Okay, so, everybody knows that based on our water rates, um, the water rate studies that we get done every so often, and the electric rate studies that we get done, our rates are based on the total number of connections that we have. If they go up, because we have people that put in new homes and, you know, then our rates are adjusted accordingly. We have a few properties in town that, um, are not connected. Not very many, but are not connected. And we definitely have a disconnect on, um, the rental properties. Not all of them, we have great landlords, most of them, um, but some of them, we don't get the feedback from some of the landlords like we do others. And then we end up with months of no minimums payments. The minimums basically are what our rates are based off of, so, um, we came up, we contacted several other towns to find out what they do. And then based on their ordinances, we have created an ordinance that, um, would make it so that even if you have your utilities disconnected, you would still pay the minimum amount. If that is. If a renter comes in, I, I clarified this with Derek today. If a renter comes in and they sign a contract with us, then we are under contract with that renter, not with the property owner, with the renter. If they fail to sign a disconnect, then we charge them the minimums until we hear otherwise. Either a new renter comes in and, you know, or, um, a property owner informs us that they have moved out. We have a lot that just skip and don't sign those disconnects. So our contract at that point is with them. They would be charged minimums until we hear further from the property owner. So it's not always just automatically flipped to the property owner, you know? But based on that, it also eliminates the snowbird ordinance, which would allow people that have dual houses, um. not to pay the sewer during that time, so. Just so that you know what you're voting on.
Okay, now let's say. I have a house and I have renters in it. They're up to par with their bill and they move out. And I say I want my utilities shut off. Water, sewer, electric. And it sits there for three months. Do I?
It cannot be disconnected. So you can, you can tell us, or you can have it off.
I want the water, I want the water, sewer, electric shut off because there's nobody living in there, but I'm still paying that minimum.
You're, you pay the minimum.
Okay.
Which is what, a hundred, a hundred and ten a month?
It's less, I think it's ninety something. So, it, you know.
So do the, do the, in that instance, say it, it was a snowbird that goes to Florida in the winter. So they got a house down there and they come back here in summer and they ask the guys to shut off their water. By the way, so what, what do they actually get charged, the minimum for the water or the sewer?
Both.
Both, okay, that's, I want to make sure I read this one.
Is there a minimum on the electric fan or no?
No.
No.
I just want to make sure, there's one paragraph that kind of confused me a little bit and I want to make sure.
But they, they don't, they don't turn their electric off because they have to.
I know, but I didn't know that was a minimum on electric, I thought it was only on meter.
There's a minimum on electric, water, sewer, um, trash, we can cut off, you know? Uh, we have an agreement with Republic that we can say, if you don't want to pay the trash, we, we can have them come get the cans and, you know? They don't like to just come get it.
So the snowbirds are gonna pay you ninety dollars a month for the water and sewer, basically?
For the electric?
No, water, sewer, electric and stormwater, hydrant maintenance. All of that stuff is based on the residents that we have in town. I mean, all of our ordinances were based upon how many connections we have in town.
I know.
You heard it during the um, rate studies explained.
Did?
I, I mean, is there any other questions that you have about this? I mean, do you, you, Jamie said that he talked to you. Do you have any comments?
I mentioned it, it's been months since I mentioned it to Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a scary thing for me.
But you, I mean, in looking back, I had, you know, candy kind of looked back at what you do, you know, out at the, at the mobile home park. And normally if somebody moves out and we call you or email you, you're like, yeah, turn it on in our name for now, you know? Because we need to go in, clean it up, we need to, you know, fix it for the next renter. And then you normally fill yours very quickly. You know?
Some, most of the time.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes some of them sit for four months, yeah.
You know, so, I mean, it, you know, I'm sure that if you have somebody that comes in and damages your property severely, that, you know, you would need extra work on those, but, um, you know.
Or it might take three months to evict them.
Right. Yeah.
And then fix it.
Right. Well, if they're not evicted, though.
And the, and the, and the utilities get shut off.
Right, it, it still stays in their name. If they're not out. Do you see what I'm saying? If they are still living there, then we have a contract with them at that time. Does that make sense? They still accrue the minimums. They, they would still accrue the minimums. So if they get shut off on the twenty-ninth of the month, we normally tell you that day, the next day, hey, we have a renter that did not pay, you know? And they would still accrue the minimums during the time, you know, if they don't have it turned on, what's the most you've had, like, month and a half? Maybe?
For, that they've been out?
Yeah, like off, you know?
I think we have one in five months or something.
Did you have one in five months?
Yeah, it was a, it was a different situation.
Okay, so maximum of five months, but you would not, you, you're still on the hook for the sewer no matter what, if they have it on or not have it on. It's a state ordinance, but in this case, that, you would let me know, hey, they're still living there. Right. You know what I mean? So we still have a contract, right, with that renter? Not with you. But if you call us up and say, hey, they're moved out, but we need the power and stuff to fix the trailer, then it would go into your name. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
If, if they knew they were gonna not have a tenant in there for like a year, what would they need to do? If they knew that they was not gonna be used?
Then I would say they would need to come to the council.
Well, I thought there was something in there about digging it up and actually cutting it off in the town.
Yes, there is, um.
There's a time limit.
So if you're not gonna have the utilities on to the property at all, I think we have a sixty day from time of notification that you would have to disconnect the utilities totally, the sewer, the water, the electric, all of that. Because the house is.
It's thirty days.
You know, at that point, it's considered vacant.
Uninhabited.
I would think in their case.
Their, yeah, their specific case.
Yeah, in their specific case, they can come to the council, being like, they're very good about doing it, saying it. We got this situation, you know, we don't want necessarily a permit, but we want to completely rehab this home or whatever that they're doing in that place. And the council can probably make some kind of adjustment there.
So what she's saying is, I'm gonna use the trader down there we're talking about. They would be paying one hundred, they would be paying the minimum for every month that that house sits empty. Until that thirty days and then we can go in and take the sewer and all that stuff out and disconnect it at their expense and then their expense to put it all back in again. It gets to be a very, the whole thing is based on, I'm gonna use the word slum lords, or people that don't care what their properties look like and fall apart, this is a way to make them get into their pocketbook and either do something about it or.
Right.
It's costing them money.
Yeah.
Because there, again, I've said this for sixteen years, the only time you get people to open their eyes and look is when you get into their billfold. Otherwise, they sit there, but that is part of that. I know, I know, but it will help with that, that is not the reason this is made.
That is not the reason, the reason is, is that if, if we have a rate study done on our water rates and we have eight hundred homes that are supposed to be contributing to that rate study and we have twenty of them that are shut off, if we have fifty of them that are shut off.
I understand that, but that is going to alleviate that problem.
The people that are still paying, now we are paying their share also.
But what it will do is it will help alleviate that problem that I just talked about.
It may, I mean, that might be the back end of it, but that was not.
That was not the sole purpose of it.
That was not.
But somebody like Mark and I, or somebody that owns properties, that's automatically where it goes into our mind process, that that's what happened. I know that's not what, I'm, I'm all for it. I mean, it doesn't affect me that much.
Right.
You know?
I did the research with all the other towns. I pulled Freeman's ordinance, I pulled Bourbon's ordinance, I pulled Culver's ordinance and Fleming's. None of them allow for disconnection. Now, not all of them have electric, you know, so, but the electric ordinance already has it in it. To this day, we should have been following it. This is just, it just makes it even for all the utilities. It makes every resident in Argus responsible for their own portion. That's what it does.
I, I, I'm okay with the gist of it, the guts of it, I just, my, I don't want to penalize Mark for doing something because he's done so much out there. I don't want him to get penalized for some reason.
I don't think I'm looking to penalize him.
Or accrue its extra cost that he doesn't need. Um, without some way for him to come to the council and we can make a decision about that.
This, this is not for people that are following the rules and the regulations, this is for the ones that aren't.
It's actually for the rates, it's not, it's not in there, I should have, I guess I should have ever mentioned that.
It's not, we don't have debt, so it doesn't really, your rates normally are because of debt. So, but what it does do, so, so the thought of this originally, I, I'm gonna use the main one, but you'll see this with NIPSCO. You have NIPSCO gas, there's no way to get out and pay a NIPSCO bill unless you retire your service.
Yeah.
You can shut them off and they will shut it off, but they will send you a bill and you have to pay it. I.
I shut them off all the time.
They won't do it, I've got a bill, they won't let you shut them off, they told us we had to disconnect them and retire them. You'll pay the minimums up to that point.
Maybe on a commercial property.
So. So this was the only thing that, that I know they do, but most places, like she's saying, the reason they have this is because they have debt to service.
No.
We're kind of different because we don't, but.
The way it was explained to me is the utilities have maintenance costs. Okay, general maintenance costs. And everybody on their bill pays towards that general maintenance, you know, they pay for the linemen and the, you know, the general maintenance of all of the utilities, that's what it's for. It's to make sure that every home in Argus contributes a fair amount to the general maintenance of the utilities that are provided.
Can I speak for a second? Okay, so, two things, one, I'm okay with, as, as long as I have an avenue, I'll give you an example. Um, we retire a home, try to get rid of it, we put in orders for homes back in August of last year that are not even supposed to be delivered until November of this year. So I would be paying, even though I have no home, there was a home there, if you took the home out, I'd be paying for utilities on, for a vacant lot for that. So, you know, if, if I had an opportunity to say, this is a special situation, that'd be.
Well, in that situation, what they said, you actually, what we call retired the service.
You retired.
You disconnected it.
You took it out, you disconnected it, so you would not get charged a minimum.
Yes, that's a rate, that's, that's like if somebody tore their house down.
Dig it up and tap to me, no.
Well, he wouldn't have to dig.
Okay.
He, he's capping it off, they pull the trailer out or unit out, they can cap it at that point.
Yeah, there's no unit there.
If there's no unit, if there's no house on a property, we just, you know, require that they dig up their sewer line, on their side, you do a different thing because you have connections that are out in the open. But as long as they retire that service, you know what I mean, then there's no.
And, and the other aspect from, from just, as in NIPSCO, we can shut NIPSCO off at any home that, if somebody's left, you just, they charge us if we get it turned back on within nine months.
Oh, because I've never had that one.
Now, the other person, if a new person moves into that, they'll allow them to hook up without any fees, but if, if we, if we do it, yeah.
Yeah. This, I don't think this was designed to hurt anybody, it was actually to make it fair for everybody. It wasn't designed to, you know, we aren't picking on people, we're not, you know, that is not the goal.
No, and, and I knew that, Lisa, don't, don't take that, don't take my comment wrong, I just.
Sit up here and say that I do it.
They have a unique situation out there and I wanted to make sure that you, they weren't gonna be unnecessarily or unfairly have to do extra work that they shouldn't have to do.
Right.
Just because of, like he said, you know, he's got homes, he's got orders since last August, he hasn't got them yet, I mean, that's not his fault. But he should, you know, I just want to make sure that everything's on the up and up and that they have an avenue to communicate with us and let, you know.
Absolutely, anybody can come, I mean, that's on our utility bills and everything, you can come to a utility hearing, you can, you can talk to the town council, who is a deciding factor for all the town utilities, you know? You have an avenue, you just gotta be careful that you don't create, you know, an, an exception that other people will be like, well, you did it for this, and you, you know what I mean, so you just have to be careful.
The only one I was concerned about was that unique situation.
And, and we are more than willing to work, I think we've communicated that, you know, so.
We communicate very well.
Yeah, we're not trying to, you know, hurt anybody, it's just to make every, sure that everybody pays their fair share towards the maintenance of the utilities that they're offered.
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Say?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, any further comment? Not, if, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero nine, utility connections at all three readings.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh nine on all three readings. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? My ears aren't gonna be ringing here a little. Snowbirds come in, we're in trouble.
Trade houses.
Moving on. Colubarum for Maple Grove.
So real quick, I sent you an email telling you how much this thing is, that's just to have the colub, colubarium. We might need some help paying for the concrete under it, but the cemetery could definitely, the perpetual care or the foundations couldn't definitely handle purchasing the colubarium for around thirty thousand for forty-eight spots. Um, I do think that somebody should help us figure out where to put it, you know, maybe George, because he likes the cemetery so much. And, and, um, you know, just kind of, Alan Earl is really good at helping us out with the cemetery, so he'll probably come out there too, but this is just to purchase the colubarium, we're gonna have to figure out the concrete, George is pretty good at that.
That's probably a problem.
So, um. It's up to you if you want to spend the money, but the prices on there is only the price per unit. Now, you've got to realize that they won't have to buy a headstone, so you're gonna add a little bit to that for perpetual care and stuff like that, so that's just to buy the unit and then you're gonna have some that you have to add for perpetual care to maintain the unit. If that makes sense, per square.
Yes.
But you're gonna have less cost than buying a grave space and buying the headstone and, you know.
And then on our part, it'd be, in the long run, kind of cheaper for us because we won't have to be pouring footings all the time.
Well, I'm not saying that, but, um, cremations have become more popular and you can put two cremains in each niche and then you have, they would have to pay for the, um, marble to be etched with whatever they want on it. Um, but you, they're like two by two squares or something like that and they're held in with little bolts. Many, a lot of times the, um, funeral director can, you know, you may not have the cost of opening and closing a grave because the funeral directors can do that, so. It's, it's an option, people are looking for a way to put something to put cremains in above ground that, instead of buying a grave space and putting it on there. Huh?
You're running out of property.
Well, that too, but I mean.
Well, yeah, that's causing a lot of this, because you can, like you said, if forty-eight of them.
Forty-eight times two.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so.
That's a whole lot less property than if we would put sixteen, nineteen-six.
I mean, you can have single ones or you can have two in one, so.
Well, look at it this way, you got, you know, it's, it's a lot cheaper, even if they pay, if, if they would pay a thousand dollars per niche, it's still cheaper than buying two.
Property.
And, and, and.
And hesitation and headstone, yeah.
I, I moved, I moved to purchase the twenty-four niche double-sided colubarium for the cemetery, price of twenty-nine thousand oh seventy-four.
Okay, so we have that's two. Twenty-four.
Purchase one twenty-four niche double-sided.
So forty-eight spaces.
Forty-eight space for twenty-nine thousand oh seventy-four.
Okay, so we have a motion to purchase one, that's the upsetment, two, right?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, but we have to have the concrete.
We just have to have the foundation.
Understand, I'll just deal with this.
Yeah, one twenty-four niche double-sided, which is forty-eight spaces, uh, for twenty-nine thousand oh seventy-four. The motion and a second, any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
For the record, that is the best utilization of funds compared to the other, quote, for a twelve-nish double-sided at twenty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars, so we're getting the cost per niche reduced significantly by going with the larger colubarium.
Yes. Okay, other due business?
Okay, other new business, anything else new? Mark, you have anything new?
No, yet.
Not yet. Department head reports.
You wiped me out on speakers today.
Please, we don't tell...
Or he gave you your, his report.
Yeah, so we, we've seen his reports, he turned them in. Utilities?
Um, just a couple things. Putting stone in the road out of Deerfield, that's going pretty good. We've still got a couple tabs to put in on that per section, but basically we're ready for houses out there now. Still waiting on NIPSCO to figure out what they're going to do with that line, but other than that, it's, we're pretty much ready. And then the wastewater in his report, he had a couple things he mentioned in there. When we haul sludge, that price has really increased because of fuel and everything else, so he's looking at another option where we'd haul in a dumpster with a bag, they call it a bag system or something, fill that up and haul it off. So we're going to try that, see what kind of pricing it is and see if it works all right. And if it does, we think there's a cost saving, pretty good cost savings with that, so we're just going to try it, yeah. He's got a couple things in here about the anchor bolts and lift stations have rusted off, that you steel instead of stainless, so we're going to be changing all those out soon. And then where the main lift station pumps to the sewer plant, he wants to do a chemical clean on that. I guess it's like a three-step process, put it in, clean down, they should get it back open, you know, it collects grease and stuff, that pipe is probably running down over time. So that's something else they're going to be working out again. If it's real expensive, it's just something they're going to do, so.
Do you have to do that to a boiler tab or anything?
Yeah, yeah, it's probably similar to that.
Yeah, if that's, if that's what, if that's what they recommend out there, I'd go ahead with that. I'm real happy with those guys around the sewer plant.
Exactly. It's a cheap, sustainable guy.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yep.
Economic director. Now, one more time.
No, it was month two. I'll get you one. As you can see or heard, Abin Marsh is doing surveying for the sidewalk project, the downtown square. Hopefully it will be done by the end of this month. I got the irrigation completed today. Trees are supposed to go in this week. That will be planted to grass, which will be okay. I want to ask you, we talked about, but since it's all irrigated, it'll all be irrigated, so they won't plant grass.
Be the good diode plantist or?
I'm not sure what it will be. We'll have, I've got a meeting in the morning for an update, so we'll go from there. We kind of had a hangup on an end dot issue. They finally got back to us and virtually just told us, we, we broke it, we had to fix it, so tells you about end dot. So that should be done sometime here. Like I said, we're, August 1st, I'm not telling you that you'll walk up there and it'll be 100%, but it'll at least be in a usable state hopefully. So if it's different, we'll let you know.
When do we do a final inspection?
Once it's 100% completed and the, and the builder says it's 100% completed. Now, at that inspection, obviously Shannon will be the main one there. Mike will be there, well, all of you.
I'd like to be there.
Yeah. So we'll have to do the walkthrough. Shannon will have all the grand information that we'll obviously need to close out. And Mike, being the project manager, will have his things he's got. If there's something you see ahead of time, by all means ask so we can either make sure that it's an issue or let you know how it's not an issue.
I'm just, I'm just, you mentioned that grass and I'm concerned if they go out there and just throw grassy all the time and then irrigate. Going into August and September, the hot months, it's not going to do...
I don't know what it actually is.
Not going to do as good as the hydroponic seeding, whatever they do with the sprayer.
Sure would.
You know what I'm talking about, Jamie, what they call it?
We can ask Mike tomorrow, we got a meeting with him. But I don't see...
Yeah, hydroseed.
Because I'm not sure how they bid that. It'll be in that bid spec, so we make sure we get something.
But it just, I, I know going into August and September time, grass does not do well growing.
I think it'll, I'll worry Mark sometime before we even think it's going to be done and kind of look it over ourselves. If you don't mind, you and I, Chuck would like to, it doesn't matter. You know, just, we all got ways of looking at things and kind of look it over so we're not going to have no surprises then when we do the finals. Is that fair enough?
Yep. I got with Derek this last week, we're going to work on getting the stuff around so we can transfer the properties up there to the park department. Two out of the four, two out of the five are there, so we have to transfer the other three. He's also working on, while we're on there, we're working on Deerfield, trying to get that all mixed right so we can get rid of the lots. So we've obviously had a builder who interested, we had another one come online that we're trying to work with. So we're, we're working on that. That's really where we are today. So I've got some other things, but we're not quite there yet.
And if you haven't been around, there's two new houses. There's one right down here, he's on Giger Street, Derek, Derek Street. He's got the crawl space, the foundation forward, he's got all that, they're going to be starting pretty soon. Westview Court, there's a new home there, it was a modular, it's, it's a Rochester home, but it's all set up and they finished the roof, so they're working on getting that together. So we have two new homes pretty much done in town.
But they're, when they're a tile in the liner, a pipe or something on that one?
We got it moved.
You got it moved. So you do have access, I know an easement was an issue with that last time we talked.
Just taken care of, yeah. Doug went down and measured, I was over to, and I watched him actually move the footers by hand from point A to point B.
Fair enough.
Land director.
Then you've probably heard about everything with Derek and what we had going on and just trying to stay on top of properties and the people.
Make a motion to accept department head reports.
Second? We have a motion and a second to accept department head reports. Any further comment? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Claims from July 2nd to July 15th.
So the total docket is $166,379.44.
Make a motion to accept the claim from July 2nd to July 15th.
Motion and a second to accept claims from July 2nd to July 15th on 2022. Any further comments? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second to adjourn. Aye.
Aye.